Let's give her another thunderous applause. I would be remiss if I didn't take a moment to acknowledge the Board of Education. As we know, doing this kind of work, it's an arduous daunting task. You know, sometimes it's easy to be critical, but to stand or sit in the seats that they sit in, it's important because they have to make every decision and think about the impact that it's going to have on students. So let's give our board a wonderful round of applause. I am Dr. Walter Milton. I am the CEO of From the Heart International Educational Services. And we were held in Dallas, Texas, but I do have central Illinois experience. I was a superintendent in Springfield, Illinois for eight years. So that was an incredible experience. So it's always good to come back. I feel like I'm home. So what I'm going to do, I'm not going to delay the process, but I just want to introduce all of you to Dr. Renee Andrews. We had an opportunity to spend the day together, and I haven't seen this kind of love in a long time, so. So Dr. Andrews is going to start off. She's going to talk about her vision, her concept, her passion, and why she believes that she is deserving of candidacy for the superintendent position for Peoria Public Schools. So without further ado, I turn it over to you, Dr. Andrews.
Good evening, everyone. I want to first apologize for writing down my introduction, but I didn't want the excitement of the moment to not allow me to let everyone know who I am, what I've done, and what my vision is for Peoria Public Schools. Good evening once again, and I want to thank everyone for being here tonight. I want to start by saying how grateful I am for the opportunity to speak with you, not just as a superintendent candidate, but as someone who has called this district home for the past 30 years. My story here did not begin in an office or at a podium. It began in classrooms and hallways, working first as a teacher's aide. From there, I became a teacher, a reading coach, an interim principal, a principal, a professional development provider, and an assistant principal. Along the way, I've had the privilege of seeing this district from nearly every angle, and more importantly, of growing alongside it while raising my four sons. What has kept me here for three decades is simple. I believe deeply in our kids, our educators, and our community. I've spent my career focused on building strong school cultures, places where students feel safe, cared for, valued, and challenged, and where teachers feel respected, supported, and trusted as professionals. Because when those conditions exist, great things happen. I've seen that firsthand. Over the past five years, I've led teams that increased senior graduation rates at Richwoods High School, not through shortcuts, but through relationships, high expectations, and shared accountability. I also had the honor of leading a K-8 school located on the south side of Peoria through the rigorous process of becoming an international baccalaureate world school, or IB school. That work required vision, persistence, collaboration, and a belief that not some, but all students, no matter their background, deserve access to high-quality, globally-minded learning. In addition to my work in schools, I've served as, excuse me, as an adjunct professor at two universities, teaching principal preparation programs, as well as leadership and motivation courses. That role has allowed me to mentor aspiring leaders and stay grounded in both research and practice. It's also reminded me that leadership is never about having all the answers. It's about asking the right questions and building the capacity of others. I want to be clear about my leadership philosophy. I do not run from tough issues. Education is complex, and the challenges we face are real. But I believe strongly in standing with our teachers, not over them or around them. I support educators in the classroom because I know that when teachers feel supported, students thrive. At my core, I am a servant leader. That means I lead by listening, I lead by showing up, and I lead by keeping kids at the center of every decision, even when those decisions are difficult. It also means recognizing that no superintendent, and let me repeat that, no superintendent succeeds alone. Strong districts are built through partnership with families, educators, students, and the broader community. If selected as superintendent, my commitment is this: I will work tirelessly to honor the strengths of this district while guiding it forward with purpose, integrity, and care. I will advocate for our schools, invest in our people, and help ensure that every student, every single one, has a clear path towards success. I want to thank you for your time, your trust, and your work that you do every day to support our schools. I look forward to listening, learning, and continuing this conversation with you tonight.
And I must say that going through the process of selecting candidates that are worthy of this community, we learned a lot about Peoria. And one thing that we found, that this is a community that desires to be symbiotic, meaning that they, or that you guys are really dedicated to working together to achieve outstanding results. And I think that tonight is an indication, with the number of people that are here, to really celebrate this opportunity as well as think in terms of our future and what's best for our children. So with that said, Dr. Andrews, I have several questions, and then we'll open the floor up for three people that just put their names down. They can come up and ask a question. But as a superintendent, what is your stance on cookie cutter curriculum for all schools, specifically facing Algebra I on all eighth graders regardless of abilities or levels?
First and foremost, I am not an advocate of cookie cutter, because each and every one of our students is different, each and every one of our schools is different. And so I think we do ourselves and our students a disservice when we think that one way of educating them, one way of teaching them, is going to work for everyone. One of the things that I have learned being a building principal is that teachers need to be trained. Teachers need to feel like they know how to reach all of our students, no matter where they are. I have been in schools from the south side, the middle at Whittier, and now at Richwoods, and never has it ever worked for us, that one thing works for everybody. And so we need to work together to find a variety of ways to make sure that our students' needs are being met across the board. And as it pertains to Algebra I, it is absolutely important that our students are knowledgeable and are able to do algebra and math at a great level, but everybody is not ready at the same time. And I think that that is one of the challenges that our teachers have seen, is that we have students at various grade levels that cannot do basic math, and so they are not ready for Algebra I. And so what I think that we need to do as a district is to expose our students to Algebra I. But we need to also make sure that we are putting the time into making sure that our students have the basics down pat, so that they can learn Algebra I and that they can thrive. I just, I'm not a proponent of cookie cutter curriculum at all. We need to have a lot of tools in our toolbox.
Excellent. Dr. Andrews, as superintendent, what would be your plans to increase parent participation in the schools? And it's a three-part question, so we'll go through one part at a time.
All right. Well, being a former parent just last year myself, I understand the power that parents have, and I understand that we need them. We should be working in partnership with one another, not against one another. And it has been my experience that when we bring the parents in and we help, not just our parents, but the community, understand how schools work and understand that we are really doing everything that we can to ensure that their students are successful, not just academically, but socially and emotionally as well. And so we need parents, but we also need to make sure that it is comfortable for them to come in. One of the things that I experienced as a building principal at Treewind was parents who come in and they're irate, and their language is not the best. But I had to realize as a parent that they love this kid. Whatever it is we think or feel about their child and what they have done, they are loved by this parent. And so the parents are coming because they want questions. They're coming because they want to support their children, but not always have they been shown how to do that and how to get the answers that they seek. And so my plan is to make sure that we have opportunities for parents to come and not just meet with me, but meet with my team to get those answers that they seek, to understand why we make decisions that we make, and to just really make them feel like they are a partner, not, we don't, we should not be operating in a silo. We, this is our city, this is our district, and we need one another. The parents are the ones who birthed them, who raised them, and we are responsible for educating them, but our parents are our first teachers. And so one of the things that I have thought about is for our pre-K students and their parents, if their parents don't understand that they are their child's first teacher, and they don't understand what that looks like and how to go about it to support what we're doing in our schools, then I think we have a responsibility to provide an opportunity for them to receive any kind of training or resources that they need, so that they can feel confident in their ability to help their child while they are not in our presence. And I think that together, we definitely can make sure that all of our students are being successful, starting with our babies at the lower end. But we need to provide opportunities where parents are able to voice what they need. We oftentimes feel like we know what's best for our kids and what's best for our parents and our families, but we need to close this a little more and open these and ask them what they need, so that maybe our PTOs will be bursting at the seams as far as attendance, and maybe opportunities like Parent University, people will come for more than the food or the music or the giveaways, but they also leave better and with more knowledge than when they came in. I really feel strongly about that. That is how I have been as a parent. I ask questions, even though I've been in the district for 30 years. I've always asked my teachers, the teachers of my children, I've asked them questions. I've asked them, what can I do? Because when it comes to, you know, calculus, which my children have taken, I, that's nothing that I ever had to take when I was in school. So help me, help them to help you and to help our district. So we just really need to provide more opportunity, listening opportunities, for our parents to come in and voice what they need sometimes.
Thank you. So part two of the question, what are your plans as superintendent to raise the academic positioning, increase test scores on the state and national level?
First of all, I believe that it is possible. But I also believe that we have got to go, we have to go to the root cause of what's going on. And it's not the same for all of our students. The reason that they aren't progressing academically the way we want them to is not the same. And so we have to take the time to really look at, why are we having high schoolers come in and they can't read? We need to go back and look at, where did we fail? What more could we have done to ensure that all those gaps in their learning are filled in before they move along? And I think we do a disservice if we just continue to do that, because our high schoolers are struggling. And I think that's where we have a lot of our behavior problems, because our students are aware of what they don't know, and the way that they cover it up is a lot of times through behavior problems. And so we have to take the time, and we've done that as a district as far as behavior goes, but I think the same thing can be done as far as where we are struggling academically and what we need to do to make sure that we're filling in those gaps. But we have to spend the time to really dissect down to the root cause of why our children are not learning, why our children are not engaged. And I think that when we focus our efforts on those root causes, then we can put plans together to make sure that we're filling in those holes and that students are academically achieving, all of them, not just some.
Dr. Andrews, do you believe in retaining students who do not meet the academic expectations?
I can't say wholeheartedly that I believe in retention, but we have to make sure that we do what needs to be done to help our students succeed. We cannot continue to turn a blind eye to students who are failing and just say, oh, they didn't get it. I think we need to change our focus from just thinking about teaching to thinking about learning, because our teachers spend a lot of time building quality lessons, and if you've been in any of our classrooms, they do a great job of presenting that. But we really need to put more focus on, are they actually learning what we are teaching? And retention works for some, but not a lot. And if we are retaining our kids, we need to have a strong, solid plan as to what we're going to do differently, because we can't just keep giving them the same thing, same thing, and then hope that they finally one day wake up and the light bulb goes off and they catch it. We have to make sure that we are intentional about those students, what they need, and making sure that we have a plan to give them what they need.
How about that? Man, I thought I had that voice. I should be a college quarterback. I guess I'm losing it. But Dr. Andrews, high school fine arts programs depend on strong middle school and elementary foundations. What is your vision for building and sustaining a coherent K-12 fine arts program in Peoria Public Schools?
Well, anyone who knows me knows fine arts is near and dear to my heart. I have a son who is a very gifted saxophonist at Bradley University, and he came through Peoria Public Schools. And I have seen firsthand, not just with my children, but with thousands of children, what fine arts can do for them. And I think that we need to really look at what we're offering as far as our selections for our primary school, and we really need to throw resources at really making that strong, so that we have a foundation on which to build. Our students, they all may not make As and Bs, but they are talented, they are gifted. And that, and our fine arts, is a way to bring that academic part out of them. And so I really want us to make sure that our fine arts programs are strong, that we are listening to and paying attention to our students and what they're interested in. Just because we may not have a cello at a school and a kid is interested, we need to figure out how to get a cello for that kid. And then we need to make sure that we are employing strong, fine arts teachers that are qualified, that are creative, that really can sort of fight for their programs and make us listen. Because we are about the business of educating students, but they're more than just an English class or a math class. Our kids are gifted, and I've seen that firsthand, and I've seen what happens, especially at Richwoods, where our fine arts programs are thriving, and it's, but they make us pay attention. And they put the time, the energy, and the effort into making sure that they are giving our students quality classes, quality experiences, that they're taking them outside of the four walls and letting them see what's possible. Sometimes we need to do that for our kids, because they don't know what's possible until we show it to them. Because if we, if we know Peoria, a lot of our kids do not get out of their neighborhoods very often. And so they don't know that, you know, there's all these instruments that I might, I can draw, you know, I can paint. They may not know that, and they may not know that that is a sustainable career, but if we show them that, then they know what is possible.
You know, that's a great segue into the next question. What is your vision for early childhood education?
Early childhood, where I started. My vision is to expand what we already have. We have a wonderful program at Valeska Hint, and we have strong classrooms in some of our buildings throughout the district. But we need more. We really, really do. We need to throw everything we have at our early childhood programs in our K-1, 2, and 3 classrooms, because we all know what the research says about if they can't read at third grade. And it's where I started, and I learned from some of you here in this building exactly how important it is and what can happen when we give it our all to our babies, and they grow up and they thrive because of the foundation that we have built. It's very difficult to build a foundation when nothing's there. And so we need to make sure that we are providing quality programming for more of our children, because what I have seen is that they can't get into Valeska, there's no room over here, there's no room over there. And so oftentimes, kids stay home, and they're in front of a TV, they're on a tablet, they're on a phone, and that's good for entertainment, but that's not good for building a strong foundation on which we can build as they get older. And so we really need to look at what we're offering, look at our resources, and see if we can expand our program, because our city needs it. And those teachers who are in those classrooms, you know exactly what I'm talking about when you get a first grader that does not, or kindergartner, that does not know their real name, they can't recognize letters, they can't recognize numbers. And I wonder if that is where we're failing, when we're not really looking at what more can we do to solidify what we're doing for our kids at the early ages. And so my vision is to, over the next few years, look at expanding what we're offering and making sure that we can get as many kids in those seats as possible and as many places as possible with the best staff as possible.
So this, I want you to think in terms of a Likert scale survey on this next question, okay? It's a rating one, two, and three, so if you can keep that in mind. As a superintendent of Peoria Public Schools, please rate in order who will hold yourself accountable to and the rationale, community, students, teachers, and staff. So if you can rate that, one, students or whomever. I'm not trying to answer the question. I think you get it, right?
So with one being the first or one being the last?
One being the first, two being the second, and three being the third.
My experience has been the students are first. They hold me accountable every day. That's why I went to work this morning, because I knew if I didn't show up, I was going to hear about it. But they hold me accountable first, and I think that they hold all of us accountable first. And kids are very honest, and they'll tell you what they like, what they don't like. I didn't learn anything in that classroom today, which, you know, makes my ears perk up, and I try to get them, see, you did learn something, or, you know, maybe if you paid attention a little more, that you would. And then I think that the teachers would hold me accountable. I was a teacher for a while, and I've never forgotten what that's like, and teachers are very honest. And they let you know what's working and what's not. They let you know the struggles, the stresses, the barriers that they face. And so first students, then teachers. And I think the community has held me accountable my entire life. People have expectations of you. When they know who you are and what you're capable of doing, they expect you to do just that. And I think that's the, are those the three?
Yes.
And keep holding me accountable. If I am elected to serve as the next superintendent, I expect when I go to Walmart, or I go through the drive-through at some restaurant, or I see you at church, ask the tough questions. That's, to me, that's your responsibility to hold us accountable for doing what you expect us to do, and that is to educate our students.
Very good. So what I'm going to do now, I'm going to call on a few people, because they submitted cards, but they did not submit a question. Maybe they want to verbalize their question, so if, I don't think we have mobile mics, so if you could just speak in your, what's the mic on the floor? Okay, okay, great. So Josephine Turner, are you here, Josephine? Okay, come on up. Oh, and by the way, you have 30 seconds, meaning that you have one minute. Okay, all right.
I just wanted to introduce myself as Josephine Turner, so you probably see my face a whole lot, because I'm always in the building. But I, my question, as I sat here and listened, the one that came to mind is how much support can we at Transportation count on from you? I hear you say a lot about the teachers. I love all the teachers also. And that, that question was, students first, and then it says staff, but you said teachers. And then the third was community, so that's one thing I would like to know, like as drivers...
Please forgive me.
Thank you.
I think we're all teachers, regardless of what we do. But you could, you could expect maximum support from me when it comes to Transportation. One thing I know is Transportation kind of runs the district, and it's important to show up, as I said in my introduction, and to listen. You know, no one who sits in this seat knows everything. If that was the case, we wouldn't have any issues in our nation, because somebody would be able to fix it. And so we have to make sure that we're listening to the people who are boots on the ground and who are working in Transportation or in clerical or the cafeteria. We have to listen to you, because you really know better than we do, because that's what you do every day. And so I understand how important Transportation is. Been over there a few times. Love you guys, you work hard. Thank you so much for all you do. I don't know how you do it, but thank you for what you do, but you definitely can expect maximum support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We had another question that just came in. How would you engage businesses and community to ensure strong careers for a Peoria Public School graduates? And can you briefly talk about the importance of workforce development?
Absolutely. As I said, and maybe I said it here or said it to somebody this week, but this is our city, and this is our district, and I think we need to listen to our community, especially the business community, because what I've heard in the past few years is that they cannot find people to work the jobs that are, that are available. And so although we have our Wooddrift Career and Technical Center, I would love to expand that so that we are in alignment with what our city needs, and so that if we can't find plumbers, that one of our career pathways is plumbing, so that our students do not think that it's just greater somewhere else, that I can't find a job here in Peoria. But if we can work with our businesses and partner with them on a bigger scale, we're helping ourselves in the long run. And I just really think that businesses need to know, I think that businesses understand that the school district needs help, they need support. And, but oftentimes, other than financial, they don't know how to do that. They don't know what that is. And so I think we need to do a better job as a district of putting it out there of, okay, we love that you're supporting our schools and our district, but these are some other ways that you may think, you may look at and say, oh, well, we have people here that can do that. Because money is important, but human resources is even more important. And I think that it's just, everything is... And, um, I think that it's just, everything is, is aligned in some way, shape, or form. And I go back to talking about our students and their discipline. A lot of our kids, I have found, just don't have skills. And so when they don't have skills, they do things that harm our communities and harm our schools. And we have, um, grave discipline issues. So we need to find ways to make sure that our students are not just walking away with a strong education, but they're walking away with some skills that they can use. One thing, if you have not been around high schoolers, our kids now are, they are some of the greatest entrepreneurs I have ever experienced in my life. They do hair, they do nails, they can paint cars. They, you know, they can build things. And I just think we need to build on that so that we're helping, not just us in the district, but that we're helping our community as a whole. And so partnership is the word. And one of the words that has just come to me through this entire process is together. But people don't always know how they can help and how they can support. But I think together we can make it better, not just for us, but for our city.
As superintendent, how would you support homeschoolers that are transitioning to public education?
Thank you for that question. I have had a lot of experience with students who are transitioning from home. And sometimes it can be a challenge because being educated in your home is not the same, of course, as being educated within a large district such as ourselves. And so I go back to, we have to make sure that they understand how schools work and what the expectations of school are. And also make sure that we understand that they may not know. And so parents may get upset or parents, uh, may be concerned with what is happening in the schools, but they're just not used to it. They're not familiar with the structures of the school. And so, and I think that as a district, we need to make sure that we are, even though they're being schooled at home, that we have resources available for them. So that whatever they are using curriculum-wise, that it aligns in some way, shape, or form to what we're doing here in the district. Because, you know, we have kids who've been homeschooled their entire lives and now they come to us in high school. And sometimes it's a challenge. And so maybe having opportunities where if parents are thinking about it, that maybe there's a time to, that they can ask questions, that they can get the information so that the transition from home to school is as seamless as possible. But you don't know what you don't know and you don't know what you haven't experienced. And so I think we, um, can do a lot in that area in ensuring that that transition is as smooth as possible and that we're all sort of speaking the same language. And that we, as a district, are providing support because they're kids in our city. So they're our kids. And we want them to be as successful as possible, just like we want those kids who sit in our seats every day to be successful.
What is your vision for recruitment and retention, uh, for the teachers in Peoria Public Schools?
My vision for recruitment and retention of teachers is to, first off, make sure that our teachers know that they are appreciated, not just in word, but in deed. And to make sure that we are doing a better job of listening to them. I know sometimes if you aren't in schools all the time, or you haven't been in there in a while, teachers making statements about what they need and what they're going through, it may sound like just noise or people complaining. But I am here to tell you, they are not complaining. It is challenging. And we need to be mindful of that and we need to listen. And then we need to work together, not in separate silos, but we need to work together to make working condi- conditions better for them, that we are, um, as a district, finding ways to help with the discipline that is happening in our schools. Because especially our younger teachers, they didn't go to school to be a doctor, a referee. You know, but we find that that's what we do on a daily basis. And so we need to make sure that we are listening to what they need and then providing whatever we can do to make sure that they feel comfortable, that they feel safe, that they feel, that they have the training need, needed to do what we're asking them to do. And sometimes that's what we find, they don't feel that way. We're asking them to do A, B, and C. I have no clue what B is, you know? But we need to make it, make it comfortable for people to speak up and say, hey, I don't really understand that. Or hey, I need some more training on that. Because it is challenging. And I encourage each and every one of you to volunteer, to come into these schools. Because it's one thing to hear it, but it's another thing to experience it. And I think that when people feel respected, they feel heard, and they feel like they're a partner in what's going on, there's no stopping us when we do it together. And so I have, I've been a teacher and I've never forgotten what it's like to be a teacher. And I do everything I can to walk alongside them and get in the trenches with them and work to, to support them. And, um, to help be a voice for them when they feel like nobody may be listening. Like, hey, you need, might, may need to go and check out what they're talking about. Because teachers are working their tails off, for lack of a better word. And my hats go off to each and every one of you. And we just need to work together to make better conditions for our teachers and provide the training that they need to do, the things that we're asking them to do. And I think we need to make sure that we are recruiting the best. The best for our kids because they don't deserve anything less than that. And so we need to make sure that we are providing opportunities for people to go out and look, and see, and visit other places that, you know, that have candidates or have people who are interested in working in education. And we need to provide opportunities to bring them here, to see if this is a good fit. But I stand firmly on taking care of our staff. And when we do that, they'll do anything we ask them to do. But we have to make sure that they are prepared to do what we are asking them to do.
There's a heightened concern regarding, uh, discipline, uh, throughout the schools. How would you, or what, what's your plan to handle, uh, discipline from the leadership level?
I think we need to really provide opportunities to listen to our kids. Those of you who have worked with children, you know that a lot of the behaviors that they exhibit, it's not about that they don't like you, or they don't like the school, or they don't wanna be here. There's something going on behind that. And so first, we have to build relationships with our students so that they trust us enough, trust us enough to be honest with us about what it is that they need. And then we need to listen and we need to do everything we can to make them feel safe, to make them feel comfortable, to make sure that their families have resources. Because our kids are walking into these buildings and they haven't eaten. DCFS was at their home either that morning or the night before. I mean, you name it, we've seen it. And it's gonna take our kids and our families being comfortable enough to tell us what's going on with them so that we can support them. Because I've seen it firsthand and I've experienced it firsthand. When you build relationships with kids and you build relationships with families, they will be honest with you. It may be hard for them, but they will be honest with you. And they will say, I don't have food, or my lights are going to get cut off. When those things are going on in your life, education is probably the last thing on your mind. And we have students who are dealing with adult issues. But they don't have the knowledge, they don't have the skill or the experience to handle them. So they're doing what's coming naturally to them, and that is to act out. We have wonderful, we have a wonderful program, Seven Mindsets, that we have been working this year in our district, and it is making a difference. We have teachers who are teaching something different than their content area. And they're focusing on those social, emotional learning issues. And so you see kids that may not have spoken up before, now they're speaking up. You see kids that may have never had a friend, now they have a friend because we are creating safe spaces for them. And I hope that that will continue moving forward. But we also have to make sure that as a district, we have strong responses, and I mean across the board. We have strong responses to the discipline that we are dealing with in our district. Because that's one of the issues that I've seen and I've heard, is they're doing this over here. They're doing this over there. But our kids are, they, they're mobile. They move school to school. We need to make sure that we are doing the same thing across the board when it comes to responding to our students. One of the things I would love to see, if given this position and in my tenure, is a true um, school for students who are disrupting our classrooms. We have kids that wanna learn. And we have to make sure that we have opportunities for our students who, school just isn't their thing. And it doesn't sound good, but it's the reality. And so maybe having an alternative school where it's different from Woodruff, but you're still getting your credits to graduate. But you absolutely are learning skills in the process. So that you can, when you graduate, you can go out and do something and make a living. And you're too tired to cause problems because you're working forty hours a week like the rest of us. And all we wanna do is go to sleep. But it's going to take all of us, and I mean all of us, from community to parents, to grandparents, from the youngest to the oldest. We have to listen to each other and we have to work together. Because I always know that there is a solution. We just gotta figure it out. But we cannot keep losing our kids. We cannot keep, continue to have the disruptions and the kids just coming back. And, you know, we have to do something different to get a different outcome. And that is one of the things that I am so passionate about, is building relationships and getting to the root or to the heart of why are you acting like this? Why are you behaving like this? Why don't you come to school? Like, these are real things that we deal with every day. And we can't just say, oh, okay, man, come to school. And then we look at our data and it's up and it's down and, you know, but we really have to make sure that we are strong together in battling the discipline in our schools. Because if we don't, we're gonna continue to lose students. We're gonna continue to have issues in our city. And it's time for all of us to say, this is no longer okay.
When it comes to education justice, as superintendent, how would you advocate and engage legislatures in this conversation? Or the conversations around funding, uh, support of the school district? Um, examples, lobbying, advocating, um, in Springfield and talking in regards, um, the needs that students in Peoria School District has?
I think we have to mobilize together and make people listen. And if that means bringing them here, inviting them into our schools so that they see firsthand what we're talking about, I think that is so important. And we, and they need to realize, they work for us. We are their constituents. And we need to find ways to make sure that they listen and truly understand why we're asking for the money that we're asking, why we're asking for the support that we're asking for. And we have to just keep going until they listen to us. And, um, and that they truly, truly understand that in our district, especially as far as discipline and things, we're in dire need of support. We need people and people cost money. And so we need that money to come from the state, but they won't know unless we tell them. And they won't listen unless we make them.
So this, um, next question is a finance question. And the financial audit is late for the second, uh, year in a row. What would you do to ensure that Peoria Public Schools get the audit completed on time?
I think that's, it's a management issue, or it's a scheduling, making sure that we know ahead of time when things are due. And make sure that we have that on the calendar and that that is a non-negotiable. People need to know where the money's coming from. They need to know where the money is going. And it's difficult to be transparent with people when we're not doing our due diligence and making sure that we are hitting those benchmarks and those targets and those deadlines that have been set forth for us. Because one thing I know, looking at our, at our budget, you know, we've done fairly well in getting, in, in accruing savings. And so this year, for those who don't know, I believe we were two hundred and forty-six million dollars all in for our budget this year. And we had to, we had like an eleven million dollar gap. And so we had to go and get from our savings to make sure that we had what we needed for our budget this year. And we cannot continue to do that. So we need to make sure that we are doing what we need to do to figure out where our money is coming from, where it's going, where we can pull those purse strings a little tighter. And, uh, make sure that whatever our board sets forth as our goals and, that we are putting our resources towards that. Because there's going to come a time, if we continue down the path that we are, that we won't have any savings to reach back into. And, um, just like our bills at home, there's a due date. And, and there's consequences when there's not a, when we don't reach those due dates. And so I feel the same way when it comes to any audit, anything that is, has a deadline on it. We have to make sure that we keep that at the forefront of what we're doing and make sure that we are reaching and hitting those benchmarks because this is a public school. And people need to be aware of what we're doing with our money. We need to be a little bit more transparent. And it's difficult to tell them or share that information when it's not completed.
If selected as superintendent, how would you equitably distribute administrators throughout the entire district so that the students are led by someone who represents them?
I think that's a needs-based issue that we really need to look at. We need to do, uh, a number of needs assessments to make sure that our stu- our schools are being led by the amount of administrators that they need to be led by. There are buildings out here that have one administrator and it's tough. With the requirements and the expectations that we have on our administrators, is very difficult to do it and do it well when it's just you. Because you're dealing, when you are a singleton administrator, you are doing everything from the budgeting to the, uh, instructional oversight, just everything. And something fall, I mean, if we're being honest, something falls to the wayside. And so we need to make sure that we have the proper amount of administrative support in all of our schools, not just some of them, even the ones that people consider to be the easy schools. They still need help as well. Our kids are busy. We have a lot on our plate. We have a lot to accomplish. And to me, it's, if I'm being honest, it's a little unfair. We need to make sure that people have the support that they need to do what we're asking them to do. Because I think in the end, it's our kids who either benefit or are harmed as a result of that.
Okay, so, uh, another two-part question. How can we implement programs like Avid and AP classes at all high schools so that a student doesn't have to transfer because it isn't offered at the homeschool?
I love that. And I know that everything comes down to money. Everything costs money. And, but we should not allow our students to miss out on opportunities because of that. So we need to go back to where can we cut that's gonna have the least amount of impact on our classrooms and our students and the offerings that we are able to give them? Because I, if you've lived in Peoria any amount of time, it's hard when you live in one area and then you have to go to another area and, so that you can be a part of a certain program. We need to do everything that we can to make sure that if it's offered at Richwood, it's offered at Peoria High in Manuel. And we need to figure out how to make sure that it is equitable across the board. Our kids should not have to live in one area and then be bused to another one just to make sure that they are able to take advantage of an opportunity. Because what we've seen over the years is a lot of students aren't able to participate in extracurriculars because transportation is always an issue. Time is always an issue. Parents can't get to certain places to support their kids. And as a parent, that's not okay. And as a parent, that's not okay. And I think we need to do everything we can to make sure that where it's offered at one place, it's offered at another. So our kids can feel secure and not, not, not made to feel different because I don't live here, because I'm not from here. And I know that we've seen that a lot in the, uh, over the years. But we need to just really look at where our money is going and make sure that we are doing the best possible job for our students, no matter where they live.
Due to finances, shortages, and children growing faster, would you consider updating, uh, the uniform policy to all solid colors and stripes, but keep the trousers, skirts, shorts, et cetera, the same?
I have to say, I am open to anything. Because one thing, I've, I have, my kids all went through Peoria Public Schools, so we did the uniform thing as well. And I do understand the research and the reasoning behind wanting to do that. But what we find in our city is that it's hard to find clothing in December or in January, when, when schools, when, you know, when, when the, the city is not like it's back to school time. It's very difficult to find, uh, clothing for that. But I am very open to any discussion around uniforms. For some, it works, for some it doesn't. And we need to, to listen to people as to the reasons why on both sides. But I am definitely open to that discussion.
That's the first slow clap of the night. I'm so programmed.
We must have a lot of high school parents. We don't have to deal with that.
Okay, so, um, I want to call, uh, Mary Beth Cunningham to the, uh, center of the, center floor, the mic.
This is a short one, and you've covered some of it, um, based off of what you said about test scores, which we know are inequitable with, with, uh, money, right? The bigger the house, the higher the scores oftentimes. We can't control poverty. But you also touched on having different curricula for each school that has different, um, needs, right? Um, how committed are you to kind of regrouping and allowing each school to have some level of a menu of choice, that they get to have some autonomy back to support the teachers and also to support the needs of the students?
Uh, thank you for that question. I support it and it's because I've experienced it, being at Treewind for 10 years. We struggled. We struggled when it came to curriculum because it's been a one-size-fits-all. You have to teach this. And in probably, maybe 12, 13 years ago, we were able to implement curriculum there that really worked for our kids. And it helped fill in those gaps and those holes, uh, for our students. And when I tell you, and I know there's some Treewind teachers here in the building, they thrived. They thrived. And so we really have to look at what the needs of the students are. And then, yes, expose them to, to the curriculum that everybody else gets, but we also need to make sure that we are sort of catering it to the needs of the building. Because I have to tell you firsthand, it has been very difficult, when I was a principal, that our kids never made the mark that was established for them. We grew them from here to here, but we couldn't get them there in the timeline that was given. But when we had curriculum that was catered to our kids, that met the needs of our kids, they grew leaps and bounds. And they're probably still growing. But, um, we definitely need to do a better job at looking at what we're offering and why we're offering it. And is it working for our kids? Because it truly, truly, truly is different in almost all of our schools as far as what they need. And so we need to be mindful that we can't continue to do one thing and think it's going to work for everyone. Because I can tell you from experience, it does not work. And so we need to do a better job. And we need to work together to make sure that we're giving our students what they need. No more Band-Aids.
If we can have, um, David Day to come to the center mic?
Uh, so my question just revolves around the fact that, I know we've talked a lot about building some of those skills that the students may need for the workforce, but I also think part of the conversation is around, um, how our post-secondary enrollment can be increased. Um, because right now, we send, um, almost 20% less students to college than the state average. So I'm wondering, what plans do you have to bridge the gap between our public schools and higher education institutions that we have in the region and, and beyond?
I think we need to do a better job of networking and working together with our post-secondary institutions. I know I work closely with ICC and definitely Bradley to understand what they're seeing with the product that we're sending them, what they're seeing with the students that we're seeing. Because I know in recent years, I believe it was ICC had to add a lot of remedial courses for our students. And our kids just are not prepared. They can't write at the college level. They're unable to do math at the college level. And so when we work with and listen to the next, you know, the post-secondary institutions, then that should sort of, kind of form and impact what we're doing in our schools. So that kids can see, yes, I can graduate from high school and I am ready for college. And so we just need to make sure that we are working together, that we're listening to one another and that we're making the ne- necessary adjustments.
Yeah, and I teach at Bradley, so I can confirm, we have the same kind of issues there. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
So the, the next question is, how do you feel our district can continue to support its diverse special education population? And what supports do you feel, uh, we can add?
We need to go back to the drawing board, I believe, when it comes to special education and our over identification of students for special education. We have got to do a better job of looking at what is, what are the issues in early childhood? And then filling those gaps and responding and adjusting to those issues. So that we're not over identifying students for special education. All of our kids have needs and we need to make sure that we are looking at our data, that we are providing programming that is tailored to or fitting the needs of our kids. And we need to make sure that we're not over exposing them to programs that are doing the same thing and teachers never have a chance to look at the data or spend time really figuring out, okay, we've been working on this for this amount of time, but the kid is not responding to it. And then we need to make sure that we have something that we're going to do to address that. We can't just keep moving forward and moving forward. And our students with diverse needs, I love them, I have to say. I have had the pleasure of learning with students who are blind, students who have intellectual disabilities, students who are deaf and hard of hearing. And they give me hope. Because the people and the supports around them are working and it makes sure that they are successful. And we need to do the same thing when it comes to our students who are academically challenged. We need to make sure that we see the hope that they can learn and that we are working diligently, that we are aligning, uh, our programs, the after-school programs, making sure that they are knowledgeable of what our kids need. So that when they're working with those kids in those programs, what they're doing is aligning to what they need in the classroom. And I think that, I, I haven't seen that it's ever been aligned and that people are really knowledgeable. It's wonderful to read to kids and things like that, but what about, they don't know how to recognize all of their letters? So if they know that that's a skill set that the kid is lacking, then we can share that information with those who are helping our kids and supporting our kids after school. And so they're getting sort of a double dose. They're getting what the teachers are doing in the classroom, but then after school, they're getting more of what they need. And I think that that is very important and something that I would love to see happen, that there's more alignment with what, you know, the, the different programs and things that our district partners with and making sure that we're addressing academic needs all the time.
We'd like to call to the center of the mic, and I do apologize if I butcher anyone's name. Iva Saret Washam? Did I get it right?
Yep. Good evening. Um, some of this you've already touched on, but I'd also like to have a little bit of clarification of how will you address student behavior, discipline, and accountability in school safety? And how will you support teachers and staff dealing with increased classroom disruptions?
Well, first, we have to be honest. We can't hide information. We can't hide data because how can we really address what we don't acknowledge? And from there, we need to come up with together, what is feasible, what is possible? Working with our SROs, working with our teachers and our, and all of our staff and understanding what is the expectation for students? And then making sure that we are doing everything to hold our students accountable to what we expect. And then if they do not, that we have some solid responses to the, to the issues. I know, for one thing, at Richwoods, we have Evening Academy. Some of our kids cannot handle being with almost 1,700 kids. They act out. It's overwhelming, it's overstimulating. So a smaller, um, setting has been working for a lot of our kids. And so responses to discipline don't always have to be, you leave the school, you, you know, you get detention, you get those kinds of things. But I think working together, we come up with all kinds of ideas that can be effective in addressing that. And as far as, as the teachers go, we need to listen to them. And we need to hear what it feels like when this student just left and now they're back.
Right.
That's a challenge. That feels defeating sometimes. And so what can we do as administrators, as a district, even as a school, to make sure that we are supporting all of our staff in our building? I know we have hired individuals to, um, support our students. And they meet daily with our kids who are struggling behaviorally. And when I tell you, we've seen a wonderful turnaround because of that, and, but it boiled down to building relationships and being people that kids can trust to be honest enough with what's going on with them and why are you acting like that? There's always a reason why and we have to keep asking why until we get down to that reason. So that we are truly addressing what the issue is and not just what they're showing us.
And you've answered a lot of the questions that I had and that, you know, I had discussed with other folks at my school. But how would you ensure responsibility of district funds while prioritizing what the teachers need in the classrooms for the kids to enable them to delve into themselves and find themselves and say, oh, I can do that too? What, how, how would those funds be distributed?
Well, the first part of your question, I think it comes down, it sounds basic, but it's communication. We have to start talking to one another and listening to one another and listening to the people who are actually in the classrooms, who can speak, can speak to what's going on and the impacts that it is having. That's first and foremost. And then one of the things that I would love to do is to, in the first 100 days, is to audit our finances. Because we really need to understand where this money is being spent and is it trickling back, is it impacting what's going on in the classroom? Because more is not always better. And we need to make sure that we are also giving time to our staff so that they can look at the data and that they can inform us, um, this program is working, it, we're seeing gains, or, wop, 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 this is not, this is not it. And, um, but it does start with, with conversation and listening to one another. Because the, nobody knows it better than the people who are, are doing this every day. And so we need to really just start talking to one another and hearing one another and then adjusting, not just finances, but the human resources, to make sure that we are doing what is best for the classrooms.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Kami, I want to, I hate to put you on the spot again, but I want to tell you, you are the best, uh, name signature decoder that I've ever seen. So the next person is Charles Thomas.
This is incredible. This crowd, all these teachers here, it's unbelievable. I wish we'd get this at every board meeting. No, I mean, seriously, this is fantastic. And, uh, Dr. Andrews, you did a great job tonight. Very impressed personally. Uh, I do have a question, of course, though.
Yes.
Um, back when I was at Woodruff, that's where I retired from, we had what was called a safe school, contemporary slash safe school. And Dr. Karad, who I just absolutely love, at that time had to disband it because of supposedly we needed teachers in other spots. So roundabout way, I'm going to get to my question. That worked. It worked for many reasons, because we had teachers there, certified teachers in every spot. The kids walked the halls, they went back and forth to PE and lunch and they, they were removed from their school because of a problem, but they didn't lose that atmosphere that's so important. Because when they return, they're going to be back in that same atmosphere. My question is, what are you going to do with the kids that are going to be removed? Unfortunately, I know we all hate to say that, but it's going to happen, so that they can continue the education process in a proper setting. And we really don't have that now. We, we don't have any place for those kids to go, where they're going to get a real school experience, where they're not just sitting on a computer punching keys.
Correct. Thank you for that question. Um, I, for those of you who don't, do not know, when I was principal at Treewind, I was also running our day treatment program. So I do understand the importance of making sure that they still have that quality school experience with quality staff. And I'm not sure if I mentioned it earlier, but I really would love for us to work together to create a true, true alternative school with quality teachers.
Yes.
I, I, I think our programs on the computer are great for what, for what they're worth, but it doesn't replace a teacher in front of them who can help and who can assist. And so I would love to see that come to fruition because I think our city needs it. And not just do it in halfway, but do it in a way that is going to have the greatest impact, not just for our district, but for our city. Our kids deserve it. Even if they make bad choices, they still deserve a quality education. So that is one thing that I would love to, to spearhead in our district, is a true quality alternative school.
When you're, when you're picked, when you're picked, I'm going to come back to this podium and say, do you remember? Uh, good luck to you and you did fantastic tonight.
Thank you so much.
I know that many of us have more applauses to give tonight, but I have to take directives from the board president, Dr. Wilson. He did indicate that, uh, the candidate has to get prepared and ready for the final interview with the board. So on behalf of From the Heart International Educational Services, I want to thank all of you for coming out and participating in the, um, town hall, uh, meeting, uh, that's given by, uh, Dr. Renee Andrews. So let's give her another big round of applause.